Number 26, 27 in meeting of the Oshkosh Council. Would the city clerk please take the roll call?
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Hanske.
Here.
Browsy.
Here.
Pack.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Present seven.
Would you all please stand while councilperson Allison Osby leads us in the invocation, and we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I ask our students to stay in the front. We're seldom this lucky to have so many students. There's two, four, six. I thought we had seven or eight. Okay, if you all want to turn around and face the camera, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. There we go. I'll start with them. I'm going to ask your age, your name, your age, where do you go to school, and your favorite subject.
My name is Reed Moore. I'm 11 years old.
I go to school at Reed Elementary, and my favorite subject is math.
Thank you. Your name?
My name is Gwendolyn Vols. I go to school at Roosevelt Elementary, and my favorite subject is reading.
Thank you. And your name?
My name is Gavin. I am 10 years old. I go to Roosevelt. My favorite subject is math.
My name is Braylon Zellner, and my age is 10, and my favorite subject in school is gym, and...
That's great, thank you. One honest kid.
My name is Lilian Warden. I'm 10. I go to Reed Elementary School, and my favorite subject is science.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Byrd. I'm 10. I go to Roosevelt Elementary, and my favorite subject is reading.
Well, thank you. Now, we have a certificate for each of you, and I will read just one of them, and then I'll hand them out, but you're going to have to help me with your names. This is a certificate of appreciation. Of all the many wonderful things that can happen to a person, none perhaps is more wonderful than living in America and being an American. Many deeds, both large and small, are necessary to nurture the growth and greatness of this nation to its honored position. You students have helped us. For on September 26, 2017, you love the City Council, the people of Oshkosh, and the Pledge of Allegiance. And the City Council chambers are our city, so thank you. Now, I need Lilian. You're our athlete, correct? And Elizabeth. Let's give our students a round of applause. Now, you can stay and watch local government in action, or go home and do homework. So the choice is yours. Thank you, Mom and Dad. Thank you. And now, we have a proclamation, then we'll have three presentations. The first proclamation is for the Kiwanis Club of Oshkosh, and accepting will be Glenn Pollak, so I will stop when he walks up. Whereas Kiwanis Club of Oshkosh, Inc. is a member of Kiwanis International, a service club organized with more than 600,000 members in more than 80 countries and geographical areas hosting more than 150,000 service projects per year. And whereas Kiwanis International was founded in 1915 and is committed to serving the children of the world, and whereas Kiwanis Club of Oshkosh, Inc. was established in 1917 as comprised of volunteers who dedicate their time to the betterment of our community and to the improvement of the lives of children in our community and the world. And whereas Kiwanis Club of Oshkosh, Inc. is celebrating the centennial year of its organization, now therefore I, Stephen J. Cummings, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, in recognition of 100 years of service to this community, on behalf of the City Council and all of our citizens, extend our highest commendation to Kiwanis Club of Oshkosh, Inc. and to hereby proclaim September 21, 2017, as Kiwanis Club of Oshkosh Centennial Celebration Day, and call upon the people of Oshkosh to recognize and celebrate this special observance. Mr. Pollak?
Thank you, Steve. I'd just like to say thank you very much.
You're welcome. The first is from the Southwest Rotary Award presentation. Ken?
Yes, well, thank you very much, members of City Council. You have before you a letter the Oshkosh Southwest Rotary Club, through its Environment Committee, awards six to 12 businesses and homes every year a curb appeal award for outstanding landscape design. This is not the first time the city has won. You've won for Ohio Street, you've won for Main Street. There are three other projects that have drawn our attention that aren't mature: the parking areas in the senior center, the new landscaping at the museum, and the new street facility on Whittle Street. But today, we're awarding you a curb appeal for your work planting trees in what we call the Bundalo District on Main Street between New York and Kentucky. So thank you very much. One other thing. We're environmentally very sound, so if you'll turn over your letter, you'll see on the other side an announcement about a project we're undertaking with the city. We call it our Water Bureau Project. The purpose of this project is to help maintain the quality of water. It meets the requirements that the city has to meet in terms of its MS4 storm sewer license. I apologize to the audience. No one, including me, really knows what MS4 is. But what we're going to do is we've made presentations to neighborhood associations and to North High's Communities Class to tell them how stormwater system works and to ask them to help us keep the stormwater systems clean. We're going to be passing out brochures to houses and areas that have the dirtiest manholes. And some of you may have seen the picture. You can see the manhole there. You can see grass here. Things that go in the manhole, like empty Prozac bottles, Coke cans, thermometer cap stick, probably shouldn't go in the storm sewer or your leaves and grass. We're going to put medallions, like you can see on this, which I placed in front of you, on about 1,000 of these 10,000 storm sewer inlets. And the North High's class is going to talk to 4th and 5th graders in Emmeline Cook, in Webster Stanley, in Newton, and in Roosevelt School. They'll be handing them brochures and a magnet for their refrigerator. As you know, if you teach something to kids in school, they'll make sure their parents obey the rules, our most effective social device. We expect, as you can see on that letter, that between the newspaper, which is the big item, circulation about 12,000, but we'll be touching 5,000 people directly with brochures, with presentations, so about 25 percent of the city of Oshkosh. And I'm asking you tonight if you would make time in November for these students at North who are developing the program and their own brochure and making these presentations, and they'll be placing these medallions by the university and by Roosevelt to come and tell you about the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next, we have a Committee on Aging Strategic Plan, and Julie Hurd is here to address that item. I'm sure councilperson Allison Osby might have a thing or two to say.
I'm going to let them present, and I will certainly support.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Julie Hurd, and I am the chairperson of the Committee on Aging. First off, we want to thank the council for supporting us in this process, and Deb certainly for supporting us. The Committee on Aging, it was very important to us that we felt we really just kind of needed some guidance and structure to kind of get us going and really push forward with what our goals and our purpose are, and that is really working and helping the senior citizens of the community of Oshkosh. And so this process for us was very exciting. I mean, it really was. We learned a lot. We got to work with other city groups, so we got to work with the city of Oshkosh, the fire department, the police department, ADRC. Our goal is not to replicate or do anything that the other groups in Oshkosh are doing. Our goals are to work together and see how we can all work and bring our thoughts and services together, and then to fill those gaps that are currently out there. So, and I think we learned a lot from each other going through the process and how we're able to do that. And I think for the first time in many years, I think we really have a solid goal moving ahead, and we're really excited about the end result and what we'll be producing. So Jean Wallerman is here with us this evening. She is the Senior Service Manager at the senior center. She's going to just kind of go a little bit more in detail on some of the goals that we have set forth for us.
So a few of the things that we will be working on is strengthening our relationships with the neighborhood associations. We're going to help improve access to affordable transportation and delivery services for the older adults in the community, and hopefully create community design and policy that supports an age-friendly community, improve communication and visibility of available services to the older adults in the city of Oshkosh, and then also improve access to home services, whether it be some maintenance or chores that people need around their homes.
If there's anything I think that we should be very proud of in the city of Oshkosh is the resources we have available for our senior citizens, and we do have resources available: services, resources, you know, you name it. The goal for us, and for probably quite a few of the other groups that are in the community, is just getting those resources out to our seniors, and that really becomes one of our number-one priorities, is just getting that message out there and that our seniors know what is available to them, because the city of Oshkosh certainly is rich with those resources.
Can I ask the question? Do you by chance have like a list of all of the senior housing units in the city?
We don't necessarily, our group, Winnebago County, the ADRC publication actually has that. It's a book, it's a publication they put out once a year. We'll list all the senior housing options for seniors in that publication, so it's available through Winnebago County.
I know in our rental housing advisory committee meeting last week that the topic came up that we didn't, you know, city staff have like a listing of what's in the city that provides housing specifically for 55 and over, so thank you.
We can get you those books. Wonderful resources.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if I... Oh, go ahead, Caroline. I pushed my button. This does state in here that this is a 2017-2018 strategic plan. Is this going to only last through 2018, and then you're going to do another one?
No, we'll carry on.
Okay. Do you have a timeframe?
Actually, we just began. So our next meeting will be our first meeting moving towards ours, because we've been working on the process, so I believe it will just continue to be ongoing. We have quite a bit of work in front of us, so...
So you'll keep us posted?
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
You did it right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilperson Allison Osby?
Thank you. So first thing I want to say is I want to thank the council, because had it not been for your participation during the budget season and helping me with my request for a strategic plan, it wouldn't have been possible. But really, the work went to the group itself. It's a phenomenal group. I talked to both Ray Mauer, who is our department head that oversees that, as well as Mark Roloff. We identified every single person on that committee certainly had valuable contributions. And going through the process, we really learned a lot about a couple of things, about how the aging population is impacting a number of our resources within the city and how we can benefit from that. But more importantly, as we look to committees and things like that, we also identified who would be great fits for the committee as well down the road. Where this is important is it's great to get this done now, because as we move into budget season and then going into next year, we're going to be redoing our city strategic plan, and we can see where some of these areas are definitely impactful, like they mentioned in our neighborhoods and things like that. So we certainly learned a lot. It was definitely valuable. It was a very good use of dollars for our budget. For a very nominal amount of money, we sure gained a lot, and I can't thank the committee members enough and staff enough for participating.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. This is more maybe for the city manager to answer. Now that they have their strategic plan and it kind of aligns with ours, is this going to be a standalone strategic plan, or is it going to be rolled into the city's overall strategic plan, but focusing on the senior community in Oshkosh? What we'll do is we'll work with the Committee on Aging, Mr. Mauer, and as he develops programs, he'll take a look at their strategic plan in terms of how he either puts his budget together, or as we redo our strategic plan, how we can fold this in with other things. It's really important for these individual groups, I think, to do their strategic plans, because when we do the full city strategic plan, some of this stuff may or may not end up on our priority list, but that doesn't mean they should be cast aside. The departments will continue to work on these things, and I think Mr. Mauer appreciates the involvement of other departments that participated in this. One day, Walter Jankowski, our consultant that does this, invited all the department heads in with the Committee on Aging, and we discussed where certain city services blend in with needs of the senior community and how we can better do that. So it also kept other departments about thinking about this plan as they're doing their own individual departmental plans. And I guess that's what I was thinking, because in looking it over, there's a lot of items that kind of roll into our overall strategic plan, and they should be at the table when we're all talking about those things, too, so that things aren't messed, you know, partner with the police department, fire department, those things, and neighborhood initiatives, so... And I think those came out of those discussions with the police, said absolutely, that's where, when we're focusing on seniors, these are the priorities, and anytime we can meld them with our strategic plan, it's really a better product.
And if I may share, one of the things that came out of it was with having the department heads there is that we were learning that a number of calls that were going through our public safety, a lot of times, you know, elderly seniors were calling, and it turned out it was really about they were looking for companionship versus specifically a need from police or fire/ambulance. And so that generated discussion, okay, how can we deal with that? And then came into discussion neighborhoods, neighborhood associations, and so there's different things within the strategic plan that hopefully we'll be able to implement and make this a tighter-knit community than it already is. So thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. We will now... Third presentation is from John Urban, and let me just say a few words. This is a building conditions analysis. One of the goals the council gave City Manager Roloff at the beginning of the year was to start looking at a number of the buildings that the city owns: City Hall, museum, library, the Grand Opera House, all of which are well over 100 years old, and we felt we want to get ahead of the curve, and we know they're going to need extensive expenses as far as maintenance in the future, so that's kind of a preamble to John, so take it away, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as Mayor Cummings said, Facility Maintenance was charged with putting together the first phase of looking at several of our older buildings in terms of building condition assessments. So we began with City Hall, the Grand Opera House, and the Parks and Forestry Administration Building on Idaho. And as you'll see from the full report, which we distributed before the council meeting, there's full summaries of a variety of building conditions that we looked at in all of the various buildings. These include HVAC, roofing, electrical, plumbing, structural, and more. We worked, we engaged both technical services to help us coordinate the effort, and what we thought we'd do is kind of have Doug Haas from Bolt kind of run through sort of a quick summary of where those buildings came out in terms of they have a scoring process, looking at all those various building conditions, and kind of where we're at, where we're at with things now, and where we're at with things moving forward. So I'd like to introduce Doug Haas. He's the Director of Design Services for Bolt, to just kind of walk us through each of the executive summaries of each of those three buildings.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Like I said, we just want to give you a brief summary. It's on page four of the books that you have. And if you want to follow along or ask questions, the assessments and the charts that refer to start on page 73, two of those buildings.
Excuse me, can everyone hear? Come on.
The City Hall building is the one we're in that I'll start with. It's planning to replace the elevator in this building in 2018, mainly because some of the parts and things like that are no longer available, so that's scheduled for 2018. The roof is scheduled to be replaced in 2019. We were here in February and noticed condensation and some fogging and things like that on some of the windows, so we're planning, or sometime in the near future, you may want to consider replacing windows in this entire facility, so that was another piece. And then, lastly, the plumbing seems to be in pretty good condition, and it's working, so that isn't a major issue. When you go back to the building assessments, you'll see that the rating system was about 70, and that's acceptable. The maintenance group and the people who work on the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems in this building have done a good job, and for the most part, the buildings are in good shape for being over 100 years old. That's on PJ's summary for that. Is there any questions about this building in particular, or do you want me to just continue on with the other buildings?
Counsel, any questions? Continue.
The other house, the other building we looked at was the Grand Opera House, and that was built in the 1800s. There's been some maintenance that has been going on this summer, and that included some repair of painting and repair of the masonry, the tuck pointing, so that's been completed this year. Major renovations were done in the 1980s, and again in 2009. There are new structural repairs that were done in the attic of the building, and electrical wiring and lighting in the facility. There's a few things in that building. There's a rooftop unit that has reached its life expectancy, along with some baseboard heating and things like that. The plumbing is old, but it's still working, so that building, too, even though it's 100 years old, has been maintained well, and it's still working today. So most of these things are just items that need to be, that you would expect repair and replacement at this age. And lastly, we looked at the Parks and Forestry Building. That has a few more issues. There's some HVAC work that's being currently completed, and there's also some electrical work in there that also has probably reached its limit. If you ever want to add anything to it, you probably need to bring in a new transformer and some new panel board, so that's a little bit more extensive. There's some hollow metal doors and frames around the building that have rusted through, so there's some smaller maintenance items there. The plumbing's in poor condition, and that will need to be looked at at some time in the future also. And the roof has maybe about 10 more years of life left to it. So that building rated out at only about a 44, so that one probably needs a little more attention than the other two, despite that one was built in the 60s, but it's a pre-engineered metal building.
Does Counsel have any questions? Deputy Mayor Herman?
This is probably more for John Urban. John, did we look at the, you know, we looked at all the mechanical sites, but did we look at the space needs of the building? Are they meeting our current needs for the number of employees? And as we go 10, 15 years from now, are those buildings going to meet our needs? I mean, it appears that some of them need quite a bit of maintenance, but if they don't meet our needs 15, 20 years from now, do we spend a lot of money on the maintenance side, or what? And I think that was what I was looking for in some of this study. I talked to Mr. Roloff about that, but was that even looked at, space needs?
The space needs, it was determined that would take a tremendous amount of time to go through the operational demands of each building in terms of how that's meeting, not only now, but into the future. We focused on those major building elements in this phase, which is what is their conditions? Are we taking care of them? Are there any major issues we need to look at now? I think Doug would agree that for the most part, we've been taking pretty good care of the buildings now. Anything that was needed to be addressed immediately was addressed already, or it's being addressed. And then anything major that we found, for example, the elevator in City Hall, that's in our CIP programs coming up. But to answer your question, no, we didn't have the time to focus in this phase the operational needs of each of the buildings and how that's being met now and down the road.
Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the issues, the Parks and Forestry Building is discussed on page 14, where Doug talked about the 44 percent. Most of those, there's four different categories that are being graded. One's at 80 percent, the others are 35 percent, 35 percent, and 25 percent, so they're in very poor condition. I think to Mr. Herman's point, I think one of the things we need to take a look at is the viability of this building long-term, and if the answer is, and what we've asked Bolt to do as a follow-up to this, is to do a cost-benefit of repairing these things that are being identified or replacing, and I think we need to take a look at that. And if we take a look at that, I think we have to take a look at long-term if we're considering any type of building project. But clearly, we've reached a point with that building that we're at a fork in the road. We have to decide which fork in the road we're going to take. It kind of reminds me of Central Garage.
Councilperson Paul Mary?
Speaking of Central Garage, so this shouldn't be an either/or replace or repair. As Mr. Herman mentioned, we should be looking at space and whether or not there are some potential consolidations, perhaps looking at, as we've talked about before, whether or not that additional space in the Field Operations Building could accommodate if we're in such dire need that, you know, we're now looking at significant costs. And so my question would be, if we didn't have time to do that now, will we have that spatial needs analysis, or at least some informed discussion as we go into the budget?
I think that from our initial discussions of looking at the cost-benefit analysis, as City Manager Roloff said, that is already being in the plans, is looking at how we can accommodate the various operational needs. That's part of what I know Ray is looking to do, is to find ways to consolidate and make better use of the space and workflow and those sorts of things. So I would imagine that's something definitely we'd be bringing back.
If there are no further questions from Counsel, thank you very much. We have one public hearing this evening, and that requires three readings before it's called upon. it's voted upon. Does Resolution 17-468 approve final resolution for special assessments, contract number 17-31, cold mix asphalt paving, West 7th Avenue in perrens, Oregon Street to Minnesota Street, closed perrens, Baumann Street, perrens, Van Buren Avenue to Buchanan Avenue, closed perrens, and Minnesota Street, West 20th Avenue to West 23rd Avenue? Second reading, Resolution 17-468, approve final resolution for special assessments, contract number 17-31, cold mix asphalt paving, West 7th Avenue in perrens, Oregon Street to Minnesota Street, Baumann Street, perrens, Van Buren Avenue to Buchanan Avenue, closed perrens, Minnesota Street, perrens, West 20th Avenue to West 23rd Avenue, closed perrens. Third and final reading, Resolution 17-468, approve final resolution for special assessments, contract number 17-31, cold mix asphalt paving, West 7th Avenue, Oregon Street to Minnesota Street, Baumann Avenue, closed perrens, Van Buren Avenue to Buchanan Avenue, closed perrens, Minnesota Street, perrens, West 20th Avenue to West 23rd Avenue, closed perrens. City Clerk, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this resolution?
Yes, yes. We have Mr. Bernard Pitts, 617 West Irving, and he's ready at the podium for us.
Bernie Pitts, 617 West Irving. I have several questions on paving of Minnesota Street. I'm not objecting to you paving it. But in the letter I received, it said there were going to be cold mix overlay, and that's what's on the agenda. And I've been told that the Engineering Department, it's to be hot mix. I think that's a correction that should be made before you vote on it. I do think I'm getting a little bit of a shaft because you did take my property on Third and Dakota in a ediment domain, and my streets were in good shape and I had paid for them. And now I have to pay for two streets. I had to pay for the street directly behind it, which they put sewer and water in, and you can't even build on it because the city code says it has, you have to stay 20 feet away from the lot line, and the lot there is only 44 feet wide. My question is, I think that this should be changed if it's going to be hot asphalt, hot mix. That should be in what you're voting on, not a cold mix. I also spoke to one of the fellows in, in the Engineering Department about the cost, and he said, well, they put something more in there in case somebody wanted something more. I don't think that's appropriate. Also, in that same letter that I received, you said the streets should, concrete streets should last 40 years. You paved Parkway. You dug it, dug up part of Monroe, which I had already paid for, and I had to pay again. And said the lifespan was 25 years. And that's what you credited me back on a 25-year span. I think something is radically wrong in what you're putting out there in paper and what you're telling the residents of the city of Oshkosh, and also what you're charging. You're giving me a credit for 25 when it's supposed to be 40 years. The state of Wisconsin, I spoke to them again today, said the city streets should be, if they're maintained properly, should go 65 years. Now, I had already spoke a year or so ago to the federal, and the federal said they should go 65 years also. Now, I think that you really owe something for the street that you took, as I came here before the council, when you discontinued the street on Dakota Street, and you made no adjustment whatsoever into what you paid us for the property. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counselperson Palmary?
Yes, Mr. Pitts, you mentioned that there was a letter you received that referred to hot mix overlay.
I was told it would be hot mix from the Engineering Department. In the letter you sent out, it says cold mix. And on your agenda, it says cold mix. What is it?
Well, I was just looking at our packet, and it just says asphalt overlay. It doesn't say hot or cold as a copy of the letter that went out to residents. Mr. Godey?
Mr. Pitts did stop up. I did speak with him earlier last week. We do intend to do Minnesota with a hot mix material simply because of the traffic it receives in the area it's in. We did intend to change it to asphalt overlay, as the letter did. Unfortunately, it looks like it was missed in the agenda title to be an asphalt overlay and was left as a cold mix in this case.
Thank you.
So you'd be voting on a hot mix, not a cold mix? Is that correct? Because your agenda says that you're voting on such cold mix.
For Minnesota only, right?
Minnesota is the only street that we're planning to use hot mix on.
Do we need an amendment for that?
The resolution itself doesn't specify hot or cold.
In order, what they said...
Oh, no, it does. I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
So we should probably do an amendment to Minnesota Street?
Deputy Mayor Herman?
I'll make a motion to amend Resolution 17-468 and identify that Minnesota Street is hot mix asphalt. Is that correct, Mr. Rooff? Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Prozey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate seven.
Now we are to vote on Resolution 17-468 as amended. I need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please take a roll.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Prozey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate seven.
Let's draw the point of citizen statements to Counsel. Citizens are to address to Counsel only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the Council meeting agenda are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common Counsel may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Now, I assume from the number of people in the audience that there are many people here to talk about Lake Shore Golf Course, and that will be addressed not through citizen statements, but when we get to the section on the agenda, which is M29. Councilman Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor. And also too, because I think we have a lot of first-time citizens that may be here to speak, probably a reminder that they needed to register outside in the hallway, and I believe that there is staff available.
Correct.
Correct if they need help in order to do that.
Thank you. Deputy Clerk, is there anyone who wants, does have some statement to make at this portion of the meeting?
Yes, I have Brianna Kempin, 1629 Rainbow Drive.
I'm Brianna Kempin, and I'm a nursing student at Oshkosh. I just wanted to talk about parking in the city of Oshkosh. And first of all, I just wanted to thank you for allowing us to park on the street by the campus because it really is beneficial to us. So recently, I just got a parking citation by, on the street, any corner to campus. And then before that, I got two parking permits, or two parking citations by my apartment complex on Rainbow Drive. So I just have some ideas to share with you. So using the example of the parking permit at campus, we have like stickers that you can put on the backside of your window in order to signify that you bought the permit. And it's easy for employees to drive by and see that you have one. So, and then we also have a thing called carpooling that you can put the permit in a little clear pouch and hang it above the window where you would normally stick it on the window. So that is easy for people to switch cars or switch people using the permit. So I had the idea of using that for the overnight permit. This would save so much time and for the employees or the officers that are writing the citations, and it would really help the residents, especially college students, not getting tickets for overnight parking. Also with parking on the street near campus, on the longest that it goes is usually four hours. And we usually have classes for longer than four hours, so it's really hard for people to try and leave class or leave some time in order to go move their car. So I was wondering if there would be an, a way to extend the time a little bit in order for people to have class all day and not have to worry about their car getting ticketed. I just want to thank you for thinking about these suggestions, and I just wanted to let you know that I would be an active participant in making these changes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, like, 100 of her? Is it, could we have 100 of her?
That is the end of citizen statements to Counsel. There's no one else, City Clerk. We will now move on to consent agenda items. And these are items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the Counsel in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common Counsel may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. And that list of consent agenda, and the consent agenda items was running on the T, on the screen prior to the meeting starting. Ask the City Clerk, is there anyone that has, wants to address any of the items on the consent agenda?
No one is registered for consent.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the Counsel for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Palmary?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Godey, regarding Resolution 17-470 through 473 on the Ripple Avenue Estates, so we have a series of resolutions here, one of which, 17-473, is for Counsel to approve a developer's agreement. Can you just explain, because we don't have an actual developer's agreement or a document in the packet that's titled that, what that purpose serves? Since there's some other type of agreement on waiving the, let's see here, accepting and approving a waiver of the special assessment notice, help clarify that if you would.
Certainly. All four of these are tied together. Essentially, the developer's agreement is the agreement the, the developer signs with the city that outlines what improvements, what public improvements the developer needs to make that will be turned over to the city. The, that is outlined in there for this project. It includes acceleration, deceleration, and bypassing on Oregon Street, and the installation of public sewer and public, public sanitary sewer and public water main on Oregon Street. The waivers and the assessments are simply one of the means for us to recuperate some of those costs should the developer fail to complete the work.
So then, are you saying that the waiver is the developer agreement?
No.
No? Okay, am I missing something in here that's supposed to be in here?
You want to explain?
It's our standard developer agreement for subdivisions and stuff, which we haven't had for a long time. But it, it's the developer agreement to re, to basically state how the costs for, you know, streets, sidewalks, utilities for new development come in. Typically, we have a, either a mix of special assessments, or we invoice them and they pay for it in cash and...
So are we missing that document in the packet?
I don't, I don't have it pulled up. It might, it may not be in there. I'm not sure.
It's not, no, it's not in the packet.
It's, it's under 471.
Might be in 471 because that's the, there are requirements that the waiver refers to the developers are waiving their rights under Chapter 66 regarding special assessments. When you saw Mr. Pitts in here earlier, by law, we're required to notify property owners. In this case, because as a condition of approval for the plat, they waive their rights to get a formal notice, and we aren't required to publish it in the newspaper. So it's a little more streamlined because they're agreeing to take care of these things, and if they don't take care of those things, then we reserve the right to do the work and charge them for 100% of the cost. So I, yeah, I didn't notice it under item, under 11, 473, but Mr. Herman, you found it under 471, so...
No, under 471 is the waiver.
That's just the waiver.
There's no developer agreement in here, but we have a separate resolution for the developer agreement that says the Counsel's approving it.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Well, under 471, we do have, I would look at as a developer agreement, talks about two-year irrevocable letter of credit or bond, cash payment to public engineering, construction $7 million, 751, two-year irrevocable letter of credit and acceptance. That's pretty much what's required, right?
Those are part of the requirements that are detailed in the developer's agreement as well as reiterated again in the waiver.
Okay, so basically, because it's private construction mostly, but a little bit in the roadway, it's really the developer's responsibility to put the infrastructure in, not the city, correct?
Correct.
And this is kind of making up for when we had the issues years ago out on the north side off of Riff Road where we didn't have a strong agreement, and the development failed, went into bankruptcy, and we had to reassess those people. This protects that from happening, correct?
This is one of the items that would allow us to go forward in the event we would have to go with assessments and try to correct that. This would be basically our last line of defense to make sure the developer paid for that.
Okay. But I guess to Councilmember Palmary's question is, there is nothing that says under Resolution 17-473, that's an agreement? Not, not in our information at least.
I, I believe you're right. And I don't have an answer for you in terms of why it's not there. I'm not sure if that typically done after fact, was it prepared?
It was back and returned, yes.
I don't think Counsel can approve item 11, Resolution 17-473. I think you could certainly defer action on that. My suggestion would be remove it from consent, remove that one from consent, approve all the other ones, and then just defer action on this pending receipt of the actual agreement.
Counselperson Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor, but City Manager Rooff just addressed it. I was going to say I'm, I'm not comfortable moving forward with not having an actual developer's agreement in our packet.
My suggestion is simply to remove it from consent, approve consent, and then you can defer it.
I'll need a motion.
Well, actually, I will withdraw my motion to approve consent at this time.
Was there a second?
I second, and I'll withdraw my...
You can just pull it.
All you can, yeah.
All right, well, then, then we'll, then I would move to, to pull 17-473.
No motion necessary. Just pull it.
Any Counsel can, any Counselor can request.
Are we all in agreement? So now we need the vote, correct?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Prozey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate seven.
That takes us to pending ordinance, as we have one.
17-473.
I would move to lay that over until our next meeting.
Second.
The City Clerk, please take a roll.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Prozey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate seven.
Now we're pending ordinance number 17-484, approved section 16-49, pernee, closed perinn pertaining to residential rental inspections to permit delugan fees to be placed upon property tax bills as special charges. City Clerk, was there anyone that would like to speak to this?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the Counsel for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
No.
Rosie.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six-one.
Pending resolution, which is number seventeen dash four eighty-five, approve combination in quote, Class B, close, quote, license for Oshkosh Arena. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this?
I do not have anybody registered.
All right, bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Allison Osby.
Thank you. Sorry, I keep forgetting my button, Mayor.
Don't push button, you don't get to talk. It's the rules.
Good point. Just because there may be any perceived conflict of interest, I will not be voting, I'll be voting present.
Thank you. Thanks, no one else that would like to talk this resolution, so would you please take the role?
Allison Osby, present. Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six-one, present.
We have three new resolutions. The first is Resolution seventeen dash four eighty-six, approve amendment to twenty-seventeen capital improvements program, Glatch Creek Relief Storm Sewer Phase Three, one million six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. City clerk, is there anyone that would like to speak to this resolution?
I do not have anybody registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Discussion.
We need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Counselperson Palmieri.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Robbie, I believe that there is an item in here that discusses, that we had perhaps missed an item, and that's what's kind of generating this. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, unfortunately, we did have, an oops, when we prepared the CIP last year, and I didn't, inadvertently missed that item as I was working with my staff to get everything included in the capital improvement program. The project, the, the second phase of the project was completed in conjunction with a Bureau of Aeronautics project on the Whitman Regional Airport. This third phase would also be intended to be done with the next phase of that taxiway project, as doing the two projects together is a significant cost savings for both the city and the airport. Unfortunately, I did just miss it when I put the CIP together last year.
Thanks for that explanation, and if I could just follow up then, and so the difference will be made up in reallocation from other projects. Can you just speak briefly to what those other projects?
Yes, the previous phase of the project had funding remaining that was kept set aside for this particular phase of the project. Additionally, in the two thousand seventeen CIP, there is a project that is being delayed due to waiting for a developer to get some work done, so we were reallocating that funding and delaying that project two more years, and the remaining funding was coming from a project named with the South Park detention, or Lagoon Project, coming in under budget.
Which is good news.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, I guess, just as a follow-up, since this is covering both that and the Riverwalk extension, Mr. Davis, could you share some more good news with us?
Yes, the council recalls, the Department of Natural Resources gave us about eight hundred thousand dollars towards the Riverwalk construction through the Morgan District, which is about the Oregon Street Bridge West. We were hoping to get about halfway through the Morgan District with this particular grant and the matching funds that we have. We did bid the entire length, all the way to the Bow Works, just to see how the bids would come out, and as it turns out, we can build not just the first half, but both halves, and get all the way to the Bow Works property and save about a million dollars if we get that done this year and in eighteen, and then we wouldn't have to worry about construction and finding, finally finishing that in twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. So the good news is, we got the grant, the good news is, we had excellent bid, and the good news is, we can get it done early, so I'd recommend approval.
Thank you.
I see no other councilmember wishing to speak to this item, so we have a motion in a second. Would you please take the role?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is Resolution four eighty-seven, award contract number seventeen dash fourteen to Vinton Construction for construction of Riverwalk west of Oregon Street, one million four hundred and eighty-five hundred and thirty-eight thousand and fifty cents. City clerk, does anyone sign up to speak to this?
I have no one.
Bring it back to the council for motion in a second.
So moved.
I see no one wishing to speak to this resolution, so would you please take the role?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is Resolution dash, Resolution seventeen dash four eighty-eight, approve amendment number two to intergovernmental agreement between Windemago County, Whitman Regional Airport, and the City of Oshkosh for installation, maintenance, and operation of a storm sewer, one million four, five hundred and four nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. City clerk, does anyone?
I have no one registered.
Thank you. Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
I see no one wishing to, the council to discuss this, so would you please take the role?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. Number twenty-seven, city clerk, did anyone want to speak to this?
No one is registered.
The first is, thank you, the first is future agenda items, special events discussion follow-up, October tenth. Deputy Herman, deputy mayor Herman.
Thank you. Mr. Roloff, if you could just kind of adjust where we're headed with this now, and we had the workshop, I think council was fairly pleased with the outcome. I received a phone call today from the Convention Visitors Bureau Board, just kind of wondering where this is all heading, and where would it then end up, like a budget item in the budget, or just where would this be placed for those people with special events that might be, still would like to weigh in on it?
Well, the, after the workshop, we scheduled this for an upcoming meeting. Mr. Mauer is not here tonight, otherwise, we probably would have had it before the council. What we want to do is be able to get the twenty eighteen rates out there for everybody to see, and so that we can also incorporate them into the twenty eighteen budget, so we get those two things done. And the CVB and several other community members were part of the working group that gave us some input on that, so we haven't received any additional input since the workshop, so our intent is to bring it back to council as it was presented to you at the prior workshop.
Okay, and that would be incorporating the, the way we're going to be billing special events, that would incorporate what police would be, you know, event promoters would know what police is going to cost them, fire, all those types of things, and then that's a four-year increment increase to those, for some fees, not all of them, some are going in right away?
What we have now, I believe, is a methodology that we, we can consistently use every year, which I think is a big advantage to everybody. So a lot of the, the personnel rates will really just be subject to inflation as opposed to changing the methodology, we're going to include this and not include that. I think we've worked through those issues, where we're talking about ramping up our equipment costs, because that was an issue that was discussed by the group, and we're going to use, and we're recommending that we use FEMA rates, Federal Emergency Management, because those are pretty well-regarded and well-established rates, and as opposed to hitting everybody with it all at once, we are recommending that we ramp it up, so the schedule you'll see will be twenty-five percent of FEMA rates for twenty eighteen, and then fifty percent in nineteen, seventy-five percent in twenty, and we wouldn't implement it fully for full FEMA rates until twenty twenty-one. That would give special event organizers time to plan accordingly, knowing that those rates are well-established, and they'll see those as time goes on.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have budget workshops, October thirtieth and thirty-first, from eight AM to five PM. Do we all plan on being at both sessions?
At this time, yes.
Next, on number twenty-eight, follow-up to allocate available liquor licenses, city clerk, did anyone want to speak to this?
I was just looking for direction.
No, anybody's speaking?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I have no citizens to speak for this, sorry.
Pamela's looking at me, I got to cover this.
Now, city manager Roloff.
Thank you. As we discussed the last meeting, we have two available liquor licenses, and there was some discussion about holding those and not having any type of applications or anything at this time. As we took a look at it, you will be getting within a next meeting or two, the formal application that we need to send to the state of Wisconsin to get the Economic Development District ones done, but there's no guarantee that those will and won't be done, and I believe that was council's motivation for not taking action on those other two. There's a possibility that somebody might come forward, for example, with a liquor license that is one of those exempt ones, which is over three hundred seats, and as I've told, as I've told you in the past, anytime we can take advantage of provisions in state law, it may be appropriate to have our liquor licenses fully allocated. I believe that, my recommendation, I believe, is going to be, reserve these two that are open right now to the Sawdust District until such time as we hear about those other two for that district. Then, if somebody comes along with a three hundred seat exemption, they'll be able to apply for that, and we'll have that allocated. If we get the, if we get the liquor licenses, the extra ones established with the Economic Development District, then we can decide what we want to do with those two, if we want to keep them there, or if we want to open those up again. So it's just more of a chronology, and you got to follow a certain chronology to maximize the number of liquor licenses you can use, so...
Deputy Mayor Herman.
This is a question for the clerk. Since we bought the recreation lanes, there's a liquor license there, correct?
That was the one technically that you awarded tonight for the arena.
Okay, just wanted to note.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I would, I think it makes sense until we know about the Primary Economic Development District, whereas it, to me, it would make sense to keep those for that Sawdust District designated that way, like we've designated the one for Marion Road for all the years, so that we can be shovel-ready in case something comes up.
So when we bring the Economic Development District, we'll likely bring those forward just to reserve them, and so we got them reserved for the time being.
Counselperson Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. What is the harm, first of all, in leaving these, just in general, not allocating the two that we currently have for the Sawdust District, and just awarding them to a Sawdust District-specific business if it should come up?
The real issue is with that three hundred seat exemption. We cannot award an exempt license if we have any available licenses. They have to be allocated, they have to be set aside for, we're set aside for this business or that business, or in the case of Marion Road, we've reserved them, so if we didn't have that concern, then it would be nothing to worry about. But the council was pretty clear that they didn't want to award these outside of the Sawdust District at this time because of the uncertainty over the Economic Development District. I think Mr. Davis and I feel pretty confident we'll get them, but there's no guarantee, these are still relatively new that we have to work on.
Okay, and then my second question is, what is the timeframe from applying for this until we know that we could possibly have the two additional licenses available?
I've been working with staff to develop the geography, the boundary that we would need to create to meet state statute. I also have a schedule with the assessor, because we have to do an appraisal for all the development that would take place to meet statutory requirements. My expectation, I'll be able to bring that to council probably for, in last meeting of October, beginning of November, and I think it only will take one reading to do that before we submit that to the state. So I think by the end of the year, we'll know.
You are doing everything in-house, we don't have to do any outside consultants with this?
No, the city staff is doing the mapping, and we're using the existing assessor to come up with the appraisal report that's required.
Well, then, I would echo deputy mayor Herman's comments and, and hold the two in the Sawdust District until we, we get this completed. Thank you.
Next, we have twenty-nine, timeline for consideration of Oshkosh Corporation headquarters site location, Lake Sherman Municipal Golf Course, potential redevelopment, timeline discussion. And first, I would ask if the council, we agreeable to have city manager Roloff explain the timeline, he does have some diagrams for us, and then I'll turn it over to a city clerk to bring speakers up. So is that agreeable with the council? Mr. Roloff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Put a draft in your agenda packet for tonight with a draft timeline that, it's really modeled after a similar timeline that we put together for the arena when the arena was still simply a possibility, there'd been no announcement of any franchise that was awarded to Oshkosh at the time, we were still working on, on a what-if scenario. The purpose of this is to try to get as much information out as possible, there's a lot of interest, you know, there are a lot of people on both sides of the issue, but we want to be prepared in the event that Oshkosh is to remain a viable site. We want the citizens to be engaged in a process so that the event remains a site viable to Oshkosh Corporation. We don't know if Oshkosh Corporation is going to continue considering this site or any site in Oshkosh, we don't have that information yet, but in order to have a viable site for them, and my suggestion is that we, we leave this as a viable site, so we have a schedule that's put together to give people an idea of what that would look like. The first thing is, we really want to present this, the concept plan, which you also have a copy of, we're going to make available on our website as well, a conceptual plan, what this might possibly look at. There's actually a couple scenarios that you have in your packet, they're not set in stone, it's just more to give you a scenario. One is virtually all, anything past an Oshkosh Corp footprint, which would be public green space, the other one would be a mixture of green space and some commercial type. Those are basically two sides of a scenario, you know, two ends of a spectrum, per se, that you could take a look at. The idea would be to review that draft concept plan with the Parks Advisory Board and the Plan Commission. We felt, given the nature of this, that the groups really should be together to talk about this, so they can share different questions that they might have, that everybody hears it on the same, at the same time. Similarly, once we get a joint board, then have some public input session, so we're looking at next Thursday, public input session, six PM. We don't have, I don't believe they have the location set, but I think we have to have a location with enough room to accommodate what could be a very large crowd. The idea is, review the draft concept plan, get, get comments on it, the consultant who did prepare the conceptual plans would be there just to answer questions, but really, it's open-ended. These aren't, these are just what possibilities could exist, no different than possibilities with the Sawdust District. The only thing we've done with the Sawdust District is the arena, everything else is still very subject to, to change. And then, there's other elements in there, but the idea is to get public input, get comments, and then eventually begin a discussion with the council in closed session. If we are to, to have any discussions with Oshkosh Corporation, we need to develop a strategy, and that needs to be done in closed session so that we protect our fiduciary interest in this. So that would be at an upcoming meeting, most likely the, the tenth, so we have parameters that we could discuss. Again, we're still not approving this thing, we just have to, as we talked about with district's earlier, we want to get council in on the, the ground floor so they're aware of what may or may not be out there. Council will still have to approve this at some point in open session, you're under no obligation to approve it or not approve it, it would be something that's entirely up to you. I think it would be necessary to have subsequent closed sessions, but also subsequent public comment. There's obviously a lot of people that are very interested in this issue, and it's a very important public policy decision for the council, and, you know, it's, it's appropriate that you get that input. Once we have reached, if we reach any parameters with Oshkosh Corporation, we don't know if we're their first choice, second choice, we don't know where necessarily we stand, we think we need to get that a little more clarification from Oshkosh Corp. I know that's been a frustration with a lot of folks, it's certainly frustrating the staff as well, until we know if we're even in the ballgame... It's certainly frustrating the staff as well, and until we know if we're even in the ballgame, we don't know. With that said, the idea was to have something ready by November 1st, so we have something that we could present to council if we're even, even under consideration at that point. So this is the, a draft timeline, certainly happy to answer questions. There's a lot of things that would have to happen both before and after these dates, but I think we tried to fill in as much as possible on the front end so people had a good idea of what we were looking at, at least in the coming months.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
I just want to make it known that I will be out of town all of next week due to a previous commitment, so I will not be at any of the public input, Joint Parks Advisory Board, or the public input on the 5th. So I will be out of town both those days. And I guess, I just have, I guess, one question. When or why or who determined that Lake Shore Golf Course was the site we wanted to offer to Oshkosh Corp?
As I'd indicated to council members prior to be sending a letter to Oshkosh Corporation, we had not heard anything from Oshkosh Corporation at all about any site in Oshkosh that they were directly interested in. They had hired a consultant we had not spoken with, or hadn't even heard or had a meeting scheduled with them. I was very concerned that they were not considering any site in Oshkosh. Knowing that that was a possibility, I suggested that they consider it. The first thing in the letter, and if you haven't read it, I think it's appropriate that everybody reads that letter. It's public record, you're certainly welcome to look at it. The letter first says, "We'd like you to stay in Oshkosh, Oshkosh Corp. We think you're important for our community." Secondly, and I did this on my own, but as City Manager, these are certain things that I have to do. In the absence of any formal approval from the council, it was appropriate and incumbent upon me to suggest sites where they might wish to consider. Knowing, based on my years of experience, what sites a Fortune 500 company would be looking for, they're not just looking to meet certain functional needs, they want, they want an exceptional site. And I suggested that they consider, Oshkosh Corporation consider the Lake Shore Municipal Golf Course site. That is still subject to council approval, and the council can certainly make that decision later on. It was never intended to put the council on the spot where it was, where they had to or didn't have to approve this thing. It's just that, in order to keep us in the running for a potential site, I felt it was necessary to do, and I accept full responsibility for that memo. That was not directed by any member of council. I let you know that I was doing it before I sent it out, but unfortunately, I have a tough job to do sometimes, and that was something that I had to do. Obviously, people disagree with that, but I still felt it was appropriate for me to do.
Excuse me, sir. Please, no comments from the public like that, that's disrespectful.
Counselperson Pelmary.
Two questions. Related to that, Mr. Roloff, were there other locations that were suggested as of consideration to Oshkosh Corporation? Perhaps Mr. Davis?
Yes, the city staff worked with Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation, and there were more than a dozen sites that we provided information as potential sites throughout the city, downtown, north, south, and west sides of the city. So they had the full gamut to choose from when it came to their criteria. We don't know exactly what their criteria are, but certainly, we were looking at something in the vicinity of 30 acres of land.
And then my second question is for Mr. Roloff. At what point is, like, if council even decides to consider this, at what point is a market analysis done in terms of valuing that portion of the property that's being discussed?
We're in the process of getting an appraisal completed, and that's where I think the next closed session would be, where we could present that information to council. I'm not in a position to do it this evening, otherwise, probably would have, probably would have scheduled a closed session for that purpose tonight, but I don't have that information for you at this time.
Councilman Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a statement that I prepared. As many of you know, I am employed by Oshkosh Corporation. Therefore, I will be recusing myself from all Oshkosh Corporate Headquarters, Lake Shore Golf Course discussion and votes. I fully support the decision of my fellow council members come to and will stand behind in that direction, in that decision. I trust in their judgment completely to do what is best for the people of Oshkosh and future generations of Oshkosh. Also, I want to make it clear, none of the people up here will be taking this on lightly. No decisions have been made yet, one way or the other, without hearing all the facts first. Your input is greatly appreciated, and it is expected on a subject like this. Remember, no matter what your point of view, we are all in this together and truly want what's best for Oshkosh. So please be respectful of each other, council and city staff. Thank you.
I just want to make a statement that, having come out of a large corporation, knowing somewhat how they function, I think we all have to keep in mind that they are not looking just at Oshkosh. They're looking at sites in the entire United States. So we are in a competitive environment, and the one thing that keeps, is certainly forgotten a lot, is the major issue here is jobs, hundreds of jobs, hundreds of jobs now, hundreds of jobs in the future. If they relocate outside of Oshkosh, this area, Wisconsin, it is going to have a tremendous impact on every business and every homeowner in this city and the surrounding area. So I think we have to keep in, the focus has to be the long-term, and I mean long-term financial stability, the city of Oshkosh and the residents of Oshkosh. So with that, if council has no further things to say, I would ask the city clerk to bring up the people who wish to address this issue. One thing to, your statements will be limited to five minutes. We do not want any applauding, whistling, clapping, stamping of feet, no signs. Treat each other with respect and civility. If you find something funny, share it with us. If not, let's respect each other's time in this whole issue. So that, City Clerk?
We have R. Dumpty, 2020 Menominee Drive.
First time I've ever been on time for anything in my life, came in over early. The other thing is, I thought we were going to have a whole bunch of people in support of the decision to try our hardest to keep Oshkosh Corp. in town, and my buddy and I are in the world, I heard if this doesn't go well, so. Try to be lighthearted about this as best I can. I absolutely love Oshkosh. Spent so much of my passion trying to make the place better, and a better lifestyle for myself, my friends, but more importantly, my kids. And I am so concerned about the possibility of headquarters leaving, and what my, the thing that's really got me geeked out is, just think about this, if the headquarters leaves and it goes to some other state, okay? So now, we just, you know, obviously, we just lost 450 jobs, probably 450 of the best jobs that Oshkosh Corp. has in our area. But then, now let's see, all of a sudden, there's a downturn, and there's going to be a plant that needs to be closed. So do you think that they're going to close the plant, you know, where the headquarters went to? Or do you think they're going to close the plant where headquarters left? So I don't think it's just this 450 jobs. I think it's the 3,500 other jobs, and I think it's the other, I don't even know how many, thousands of jobs that support, you know, the main manufacturing facility. So let's take all that into account. The other thing I'm really concerned about is just having it move up to the, what do you want to call it? This thing's been nuts. All right. What I'm, what I'm really concerned about is just having it go to Nina Minasha. I am so sick of those guys. It's ridiculous. I mean, I used to do corporate, big-box retail, and by zip code, all the big corporations know that us people in Oshkosh, the little thinkers, are more than happy to drive up to Nina Minasha Appleton and spend all our money. But you think those S.O.B.s will come down here and spend money? No. They've got it all done by zip code. Shame on us. And I think that something is in our water, because we think so much smaller than the rest of the, the rest of the area. I mean, I can remember my grandfather telling my parents, you know, "Who are you? Who do you think you are to get a new car? You know, it takes money to make money." And that, that's the mindset that's happened in our community, and for some weird reason, I don't get it. It's not like that anywhere else. I mean, we can do this, we're all one, we pull in the same direction, and we've got so much momentum going right now. I mean, you've got the Riverwalk, you've got Leach Amphitheater, you've got the water's redevelopment, you've got the Morgan property tore down, you've got the Buckstaff tore down, you've got the new stadium that's going up. I'm missing a bunch of stuff. Eagles Club is getting rejuvenated by the Johnson family. The YMCA is down in downtown right now, it's awesome. So finally, we've got all this momentum going in one direction, and now, all of a sudden, this is like this, whoop, back to being little old Oshkosh again, just pull the rug out right from underneath us, and let somebody else get the single best company that we could ever ask for. And we can't even get big-box retailers to come here. Here we have Fortune 500 company that wants to come with their best talent, and we're going to possibly let them walk away. Now, back up for a second. I don't want to go on a golf course. I mean, I've got memories there myself, had Clash Reunion, golf outing, I chipped one in from 175 yards, and, you know, fortunately, I got 11 on a hole, but it was still a great moment. And, you know, I wish it wouldn't go there, but from my recon, they've already picked the sites. You know, I wish it'd be on the Morgan property, I wish it'd be on the Sawdust District, but from what I've been told, those aren't options anymore. So it's ridiculous for us to say, oh, I'll just let them go. I mean, you kidding me? If they want to close every golf course, every bowling alley, every boat landing, we got to do what it takes to keep these guys. Sorry, I'm getting a little cuckoo here, hold on. Maybe I should just get out of here. Yes, it's good enough. Well, here, how's this? The other thing that I'm most concerned about, even more than the jobs and the money, is that I've got a chance to meet some of these people that are coming in from out of town. One kid was a graduate from West Point, sat down, had a couple beers with him, talked to him for, you know, maybe an hour. And it was so inspiring to talk to somebody that's been around the world and looks at the potential that we can do here in Oshkosh. I mean, he doesn't, he can't believe that we're not farther ahead than we are. And all the ones that I've met from there, they're coming from a different mindset of, you know, this is crazy, we can actually do this right here in Oshkosh right now, and we are all one. It's, you know, rising tides float all boats. If some guy's making $2 million a year for Oshkosh Corp., God bless him, if all of us make an extra X amount. I mean, I don't understand how we can be mad at the company for being successful. That's been really frustrating to me. And, okay, now I'm really going cuckoo. They've also, just in the last few years, they've stepped up so much in their contributions to the Boys and Girls Club, to the YMCA, they're on numerous different corporate boards. I mean, the whole mindset of Oshkosh Corp. in the last three or four years, I guess since Wilson Jones has been there, I'm getting gonged here. You know, it's all, it's all just changed for the better, and I just really hope that we all pull in the same direction and do what it takes to keep them there. If it can be someplace besides the golf course, great. But if not, let's sell the golf course. Thank you.
City Clerk?
Mark Caines, 1320 Snowdon Drive.
All right, thank you for allowing me to speak. That's a pretty hard act to follow, thank you. I would like to speak in favor of allowing Oshkosh Corp. to obtain that property for basically three reasons. The first one is, Oshkosh Corp. has been a longstanding part of this community. They've been a good neighbor, they're a big source of jobs, and they've been very generous in terms of community contributions. The second reason is, I think that developing the Lake Shore Golf Course into a multi-use venue, like I've heard they've been considering, gives more people use of that than a golf course that, from what I understand, is not making a lot of money, which would indicate to me it's underused. And thirdly, keeping Oshkosh Corp. here would do nothing but improve our tax base. And so, in the interest of being brief, I'll leave my comments at that.
Thank you. Pam?
Hi, I'm Julia Solomon, 1320 Snowdon Drive, and I am here to speak in favor of doing whatever it takes to keep Oshkosh Corp. here. We've heard from the previous speaker, you know, the three points, retaining jobs. I would like to add expansion of jobs, a multi-use park with public space, expanding the tax base, but I want to speak from the heart. None of us were here 100 years ago. Oshkosh Corp. has been here 100 years. Some guy, or perhaps gal, visionary, thought, you know what, Oshkosh is the place, and look how far it's come, and look how far it's come for our Oshkosh. Imagine Oshkosh 100 years from now without Oshkosh Corp. Okay? Just take a second. I lived, sorry, I worked in Fond du Lac about eight to 10 years ago, when a very similar conversation regarding Mercury Marine was being had. I remember the fear in residents of Fond du Lac when they thought, oh, my gosh, one of our major employers is leaving town, and that discussion they had with Oklahoma. Thankfully, Mercury Marine stayed in Fond du Lac. And guess what happened? Engineers from Oklahoma came to live in Fond du Lac. Engineers from Oklahoma came to live in Oshkosh, one of my neighbors relocated from Oklahoma. So if Oshkosh Corp. leaves Oshkosh, it's not just a loss of jobs, it's brain drain. It's our top engineers leaving Oshkosh, because they're going to follow their company, because their company is going to provide them with jobs somewhere else, not in Oshkosh. So think about the repercussions of that. Brain drain of our top engineers, top, whatever jobs Oshkosh Corp. uses, the children. What's going to happen with our school enrollment? What's going to happen with the quality of our schools? So I want you to think beyond tomorrow. I want you to think 100 years from now. Secondly, and no offense to the age group that represents the city council and the public here, but we have to think about millennials, not baby boomers. We need to think about what do young professionals want when they relocate to a city? And it's not necessarily golf courses. It's other types of parks, it's trails, it's multi-use, joint use, it's a lot, a lot more. I recently attended the Imagine Oshkosh community conversation, presentation, whatever it was called, and I would like for you to focus on that word, imagine. Imagine Oshkosh without Oshkosh Corp. I certainly can't. I would probably move out if Oshkosh Corp. left, and I don't work for Oshkosh Corp. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, our next speaker.
Linda Wilkins, W-872 Leslie Lane, Green Lake.
Hello. I lived 44 and 1/2 years of my life in Oshkosh, for more than half of my life. I love my hometown, and I, especially the area that I grew up in, the Rainbow Park and the golf course. I have a different opinion than, than the last three speakers. And I would like the city manager, the city council to wake up, the city attorney to wake up, and the city clerk to wake up. You know, Mark Roloff has-
You address the council only.
Okay, well, Mark Roloff has decided to sell the golf course. He even admitted it. He alone has made the decision to offer them the golf course. Now, everybody seems to think, well, that's all right, let's jump on board. It's not all right. You know, I attended September 12th council meeting, and I really did not find his briefing. I found it disgusting and disturbing, and I, his briefing threw up many warning flags. The real issue is, why did he choose the golf course? Why? It's a city park, and it's not for sale until he decided it's for sale. What's in it for him? And do you know all the facts? He wants to- to push this deal through fast. He said, "fast," before anybody knows the whole story. And so I'm wondering, if you're pushing something through fast, what are you hiding? Okay, I understood from the meeting that he alone, because he said this two weeks ago, decided that he would offer the city the golf course. What right does he have to offer city parks? Why didn't he offer Menominee Park or South Park? Why the golf course? Okay, he promised new jobs. I know that Oshkosh Corp. is very important to Oshkosh. They have picked locations outside of Oshkosh. That should tell you something. You want to keep them here? I think that would be wonderful. But why does he have the power to offer the golf course? And how can a new building offer lots of new jobs? Okay? And Oshkosh Truck is 100 years old. That golf course is 100 years old, you know? And they have, the people who work in the factories help make Oshkosh Corp. a Fortune 500 company. And the workers golf at the golf course, not at the country club like the big leagues do. To put the interests of a corporation over the interests of people is flawed thinking. And Mr. Mayor, I am disturbed when you want to make everybody have a guilt trip if they decide to leave, because you, they just can't have whatever they want. And the city council, I mean, the city attorney, and I'm addressing you because people talked about having a referendum. No, a referendum's not necessary. Okay? Or you can do it without a referendum. And the city municipal clerk said, you know, it's her job. If people get enough signatures for a referendum, it's her job to make this happen. Okay, citizens are scrambling to save a part of Oshkosh history and beauty. And I do not know Oshkosh Corporation's involvement in this issue. They should take pride in the city, which has been its home for 100 years, respect the people of Oshkosh, and find a local setting where they can build headquarters, which will make the city more attractive. What does this say about Oshkosh Corporation? If they destroy a city park and take green space from the citizens of Oshkosh, that's what they're doing. They're taking green space from the citizens, you know? And this will not make Oshkosh more attractive. The city council should not even consider this golf course sale, say no, and investigate. I think the city manager is cohorts. Something is wrong. Don't betray the city of Oshkosh. Yes, jobs are important, but there are other things that are important, which will attract people to Oshkosh. We need more green space. As that lady said, millennials are looking for other things in parks. But to destroy a park, to give it away, is just plain wrong. Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Jerry Inklem, 1402 Liberty Street.
Well, I own golf. I'm not here to save a golf course. But I was at the parks meeting here a while back, and I am concerned about that land that we're possibly going to help Oshkosh Corporation develop. Why? Think about the future from now, probably beyond my lifespan. You take that generation down in that area, and you look, oh, yeah, what is this huge building they had? Well, that's the Oshkosh Corporation building. We helped them settle in this area. Well, what's it before? Well, it was a golf course. Golf course? Yeah, and a lot of people had a vision of that golf course becoming a major park area for the citizens of Oshkosh. Oh, wow. We gave them that? Well, we helped them get in there. How do you feel about that? You know, 100 years they're here now, and this area made them what they are. Of course, the military helped them a lot with that, too. But when you look back at 100 years, I worked for a company in Oshkosh that also celebrated 100 years. They're not here anymore. It's 12 and 1/2 years ago. I walked out of there, lost my job there, and had to start over. And a lot of that was due to a large corporation buying out that family company and making some very poor mistakes. And when it comes to large corporations, I have a fear of buyouts. They're not as secure as you might think they are. If you check the internet, for example, you will find out our second largest employer is on the verge of a buyout, 50/50 chance of a buyout of that corporation. I don't know if people are aware of that. I have stock for that company. I was wondering why it shot up like $6, $7 that one day. So I went online, I did some investigating, and Bloomberg released the facts on it, that it could be 50/50 chance of a buyout of that large corporation. Their headquarters are in Nina. What do you think will happen up there? I hope it works out well for everybody down here. There's a lot of people down here work there. I just recently retired from that company. So what we do, we have to work hard, harder than we ever have, to keep Oshkosh Corporation in this area, not necessarily promoting park space, but other areas. You know, this town is of size that we could locate them in many, many areas that are very convenient to the airport. I see the corporate jets flying in there all the time. They need to get to the airport quick and get out here. They have facilities all around. They are not just military. They have, I don't know if you people are aware, they own Magnelias, they own companies all around. So, you know, they're moving around quite freely. So I really was surprised that we're offering a golf course. At the time that I heard about it, matter of fact, at the time I first heard about it, oh, wow. Get a little money out of that golf course? I don't golf. I really didn't care at the time. And then I took a drive down, I stopped, got out of the car, started looking around, and I thought, wow, we're willing to offer this to keep a corporation here? If it all comes down to the last final sentence that this is the only location they're willing to build on, then I suppose we have to get down and say, okay, we'll go for it. I know there's a lot of jobs, but I hate to see what'll happen 20, 30 years. You never know. Buyouts come in big corporations, they come and go. You're all aware that they were close to a buyout here a couple of years ago, and they fought it off. All these big corporations are prone to a buyout. They're not that secure. And when they do, they're so large, they can flip that switch. Any building, any manufacturing facility, they walk away. It's a write-off. So we have to work hard, harder than ever, to keep them here. They're a good company. You can't replace corporations that have been around for 100 years. They make a good product. But I always kind of think about, why do you need such elaborate headquarters? You know, their last large bid came down to dollars and cents. They had to beat out competition. What do they have headquarters? Do you think it really makes a difference when someone comes to Oshkosh and say, well, you know what? We're gonna take the Oshkosh Corporation bid, because, boy, they have a beautiful headquarters? I don't think that works anymore. So let's get together, work really hard at this, keep an Oshkosh, and we'll do it together. Thank you.
Steve Clark?
Greg Pierce, 1156 West Word Drive, Nina, Wisconsin.
Good evening. I'm the president of the Oshkosh Arena. We're 1212 South Main. I know this is a difficult decision for the council. I know there's a lot on the line. I just want to break it down really simply. There is no other site in mind. Change is very difficult, and I understand that. But we are in a war to maintain one of our premier employers in this community. And it's not our fault. It's not the people who support the golf course's fault. It is the way the business world and the way the public sector works in terms of attracting companies. But if we do not find a resolution for a site for this company to stay, they absolutely will move. This is a publicly traded company that's about dollars and cents. And this is a company that, one of the reasons why we built this arena, is because of this company. So the decision is, we have to put our A-game on. We have to do everything we can to make sure that we provide them the opportunity to stay. I agree with the people that have talked about the golf course and maintaining it. The issue is, in the long run, when you look at a corporate headquarters, you're doing it to maintain talent and to retain talent. When you're talking about people at the level that we have that are employed in this community, they want and need a facility that is able to meet those standards. When it comes right down to it, unfortunately, the golf course site is the only option. With where I'm building, I would love them to be in the Sodas District. I've told them that. That's not gonna happen. So it's really about, let's be real about where we're at right now. I would in no means be interested in selling the golf course if it wasn't the site that we need to maintain this company. And if we let this go, this will also become the most expensive golf course in the upper Midwest. Because of what we're gonna do to keep it, I'm not so sure people want to pay the freight for a round of golf to make up for what's gonna happen. If you look at the impact of this company, Oshkosh Corporation generates $6.3 billion worth of income per year. Their supply chain in this community alone is $150 million. That is not replaceable. We are, as Mr. Dunky stated earlier, we are on a roll in this community. There's a lot of great things happening. This will set us back a decade if we decide to not find a way to keep Oshkosh Corp. So for council, I think we need to continue to look at how we're gonna put on our A-game, how we're gonna play Aaron Rodgers in our game and not Brett Hunley, because it is life or death, because Appleton, Nina, Minasha, and other communities want this company, and this is gonna happen. So we either have to decide we're gonna play ball, play the game the way it's set out, or we're gonna have to accept what we're up to. Thank you.
Next speaker, Pam.
Michael Gudrow, 4482 Harbor Village Drive, Amrell.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to take a few minutes to share some thoughts in regards to the golf course future. If I were passionate, first of all, if I were passionate about the sport of golf and had a lot of great memories at the golf course, I'd be here fighting for the golf course right now. I understand that, and I respect that. However, I have a little different view of it, and I just simply believe this is an important opportunity to use a valuable asset that the city owns and controls to improve the overall life experience in the city of Oshkosh, well beyond just keeping Oshkosh Truck here. We've made significant investments in our Riverwalk already. In Mike Land, I envision this urban path that extends from the Menominee Park, past our Boys and Girls Club, past the new YMCA, into the Leach Amphitheater, along the north side of the river, all the way out through our campus, around our bridges, out to the heritage path that brings us back to the south side of Highway 41. Then we go through this new property, and if we do it correctly, we'll put walks through there, add parks, create new development opportunities in this asset. The city of Oshkosh doesn't have unlimited resources and funds. It's good that we look at all of our assets from time to time and determine if this is the best use for today. I respect that the golfers want to keep their golf course, but that isn't what's best for the overall economic and the life conditions for all of us. We can create tributary walkways into the path, into our neighborhoods, from the south side to the north side, that allow more people to access this path and create more park opportunities and more recreational opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Brett Spangler, 841 Cherry Street.
Hello, everyone. I had a speech prepared, but I'm gonna pretty much throw out the entire thing. When we're talking about, the first person was talking about millennials and what we want, and to think 50 years ahead, this just sets a very dangerous precedent of being in itself, public parkland. And I wonder what's gonna happen in 50 years when they need a new headquarters, and there's this precedent set of just being able to give them anything that they want in a fold under the pressure. And, you know, Menominee Park is on the lake as well. So I just think, you know, 50 years from now, I'm gonna be an old tired man. I'm not gonna be able to fight this like I am right now. Also, for the increased water accessibility, I saw the report in the paper about them wanting to build where the clubhouse is, which is right on the water. So I'm not sure how we can have, you know, this idea of being able to increase water accessibility if they're right on the water there. We're also making the assumption that they all live, all the Oshkosh Corp. employees live in Oshkosh, and if they're, you know, right on the highway, there's the possibility that it's just easier accessibility for them to get on the highway, to go home to the town of Algoma, Nina, Minasha, Fond du Lac, wherever they may live now. And to the person speaking about unity, I believe, you know, we could really be unified if we chose something like the Morgan District, or the Morgan site that promotes spending within Oshkosh. And it's not that the people who are for Lake Shore are against Oshkosh Corp. We want them to stay just as bad as anyone else. So I just think it would be a win-win scenario for everyone, and we could all really come together in that unity. If they were offered the Morgan site or any other site, really, we could give them such a great deal, such a, you know, deal with a lot less opposition. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Pam?
Jamie Chapin, 140 South Westfield Street.
That was close enough. My name is Jamie Chapin. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. Steve, I've seen you out at the golf course before. I know that you enjoy it. I know that a lot of people in this room are also here in support of the golf course. I guess the few things that really come to my mind is the value and the relationships that I've been able to build, the value in all the friendships that I've been able to start and maintain throughout the years at the golf course. It's been a community resource for myself, for my family, for everybody, for a large percentage of the people in this room that I know, and that I know personally and have known for 15, 20 years. Dick over there, he's been at Lake Shore for 20, 25 years, somewhere in that neighborhood. Kirk, he's been a fixture at the course as well. These are relationships and friendships that I would have never developed without the golf course. These are meaningful friendships that I have. These are people that I respect, that I would have not had the opportunity to know. So from a community relational standpoint, I think it offers quite a bit, an opportunity for us to share an experience together. So from a relational standpoint, it's been invaluable to me. It really has. So that's probably the number one resource that I use. I do use the rec gym to play basketball, and I do use the softball dimes as well, but I would say by far, the golf course is the most public-use facility that my family enjoys in the city. So it'd be a shame for me to lose it. I understand what's at stake. I understand that nobody in this room wants to lose Oshkosh Corp. For us to provide an opportunity for them to stay here in the city of Oshkosh, I do agree with Mr. Roloff. We need to do everything that we can in order to keep them here within the city. For us to lose them, it would be devastating. Ultimately, if we lost the corporate office, the 400 to 500 jobs, let's say Nina were to get it, Appleton were to get it, let's say they left out of state, Washington DC, Washington, wherever else they're considering, that would be a tragedy. We don't want that. We want them to stay here. The questions that I have, though, are- The questions that I have, though, are, why are we choosing an already-developed site? Why are we choosing a site that already provides a significant value to the people in this community? Why are we choosing a site that's been in existence for over 100 years? And from a profitability standpoint, yeah, it does not turn a profit, but tell me what other park in the city does. There are no other parks that generate any other source of income that would be measurable. I think that's very significant, and to potentially take 25% of the share that we have of public parks in the city of Oshkosh and essentially gift it to a corporation, that's a tough call. That's a very difficult decision. I would not want to be in Mr. Woloff's shoes to make that decision or in the council's position to do that. What's at stake here is significant. It is large. I get it. But ultimately, what we've had has just been so great to me. So personally speaking, this course means more to me than just about any other public fixture. And, you know, I guess I'm willing to hear what the council has to say, but at the same time, why can't we choose an undeveloped site? Or why can't we encourage them to choose an undeveloped site? Primarily, financial considerations are very important. So can we create a special tip? Can we do something in order to take an undeveloped site and make that into something very desirable and an A-plus type opportunity for Oshkosh? Can we do that? So ultimately, that's all I have, guys. Thank you for the opportunity.
Robert Hartley, 1711 Pinocchio Street.
Thank you very much for your time. This is the third time that I've come and spoken to the council. All of you probably remember the last couple of times that I was here. I'd like to talk about something a little different. First of all, the reason that I came was to present the petitions that we had signed. We have almost 550 signatures, and I have presented them through one of the council members to the city clerk. There's a copy of it in there today. You can all check on it. Those are copies. I have the originals at home with me. Just to let you know, didn't make copies for every one of you. We're on a tight budget. It's mostly my money that's going into it. This is definitely a grassroots-type of campaign and a grassroots-type of signature. I started off with 10 sheets that I sent out. I had 40 returned to me. People actually were going out and making their own. So please look at this and consider what it is, over 500 people in the city. Notice on the petition, it does not say the name Lake Shore. What it says is that the people would like to have a full citywide referendum if we're going to make this large of a move. That's all it says. Let's go to the city, and let's talk to the people in the city. Two things I'd like to talk about in my five minutes, four and a half that I have left. First of all, the definition of a park. And I think all of us have had conversations here and everything about what actually a park is. If I could indulge everyone in the room for three seconds, five seconds, close your eyes a minute and think about the most wonderful time you've ever had in a park. Mom and dad, fishing with grandpa, whatever it is. That's the emotional feeling that these people have for that golf course. It's that same emotional feeling that you had about fishing with grandpa over in the river, in the park, in Menominee Park, or something like that. It's extremely important. That's what a park is to these people, and we have to consider that this is what it is. A park is extremely important to people. Park is also a green space. That term's been used over and over again. It's extremely important for us to consider this. Millennials, young people are looking for green space nowadays. And according to the Nelson Stewardship Program that the state sponsors, the city of Oshkosh has the top 20 cities in the state, has one of the lowest areas of green space of all top 20. We rate almost in the bottom to this, and now we're thinking about getting rid of it. That's basically what a park is. The other thing, second point I'd like to bring up, is due diligence. And this I direct to every one member of the council. Before you make such an important decision, please, please do your due diligence, each one of you individually, please. I have a couple of things to suggest, an idea. First of all, some things that have been talked about here are, of course, the other 70 acres. What are we going to do with the other part of it? Everybody's talking about Oshkosh Truck. We love Oshkosh Truck. I think it's a fantastic corporation. I think there's no way we should ever lose them. But they only want one-third of the property. What are we going to do with the other third? We've got kind of a vague notion this morning, or this afternoon here, this evening, from Mr. Woloff, possible green space, possible this, possible something else. Please do not make any decision until you are absolutely sure what's going to happen with that 70%. The other, now, number two is options. We've heard a couple of options before. We just came up with the Morgan property. We've been told it wasn't large enough. It's 27 acres. They want 30. Three acres, I don't think is a deal breaker on this. It also has special tax benefits to it. It's right downtown by the arena, has a great waterfront view. I think if I was a salesman, which I was for many, many years, I might, well, be able to sell that. Number three point is the voter's opinion. Have you listened to your constituents, each one of you? I just gave you 550 signatures, we're done almost on their own. I printed up 10 copies, I got back 40. People were doing it completely by themselves because it was such an important issue. Have you listened to your constituents completely? Number four is something that I was kind of surprised about when I realized that there is an Oshkosh, I have to read this, Oshkosh Sustainability Advisory Board, which has a mission statement that if anything is done that affects anything in the city that has to do with the sustainability of Oshkosh, it is your responsibility to check with those people and to check with it. Have you done your due diligence with those people? Have any of you checked with Sustainable Oshkosh to make sure this is an acceptable practice? Number five, finally, is all little nits and lice. We've talked about Mary Jewel Park, and everyone's heard about it before. I had friends of mine that went and did research at the library and found out that, of course, we all know that on May 3, 1913, Mr. Sawyer gave a piece of land to the city of Oshkosh so that his wife would have a park named after her. It was in perpetuity, and so it lasts forever. We don't know how much that land is, how much that space is. We checked, we can't find the exact plot lines on it. I'm running out of time here, so, and actually, I think I've got about 10 seconds left. I have one thing to say at the end. You've got a darn tough decision to make, folks. You've got three choices to make here. Number one, are you going to be remembered as the city council, the caper of Oshkosh Truck? Or are you going to be the city council that is known as the one that saved the park and saved the course, the golf course? I don't think you have to be the one. I don't think you have to be responsible for either one. You need to do one thing and one thing only to solve that problem, and that's a citywide referendum. You decide what the people want you to decide.
Your time's up, sir.
It's a democracy. Thank you.
Bruce Sager, 1703 Pinocchio Street.
I had a lot of things planned to talk about, but some of it's changed after listening to some of the speakers. First of all, everybody's talking like, if we give them the golf course, they're going to stay. That's not a given. That's a possibility. It's a nice carrot. But I agree with the people who've said, we've got so many spots in Oshkosh that are vacant, that have been abandoned. One of them, Johnny Carson used to talk about, and I think everybody here's old enough to remember Johnny Carson, and that was a pioneer insight. Now, I don't think that works, but like he said, Morgan Doors might work. If being on the water is so important, Morgan Doors could work, and it does have tax, et cetera, which could make it easier for you guys to sell it to Oshkosh Truck. If being accessible to Highway 41 is a bigger importance than the JCPenney and old Walmart site should be a real good one. It's right on Interstate 41, it's close to the airport, it's just not on the water. But these things should be sellable if somebody tried. I think it's crazy that somebody without talking to you guys, the council, offered one of our city parks. I wrote you all a letter a while back, talking about the fact that I'm sure JP Morgan and a whole bunch of other Fortune 500 companies would love to build on Central Park in New York. And you think New York City's jumping through hoops for them? Oh, they're a Fortune 500 company, we have to do this. The other thing is, Oshkosh Truck is looking for headquarters. Their factories are still going to be here, those jobs are still, and the supply lines. Now, there's no guarantees they'll stay here, but there's no guarantees with any company. They could shut their doors, they could be bought out, who knows? But to give up one of our city parks, which you could never get back again, is absurd. I've heard people talk about, well, the park is only used part of the year. How does giving it to a private company give the citizens of Oshkosh more access to it? It doesn't. That doesn't make any sense at all. I don't know if everyone's aware, but there's a lot of cross-country skiing on the golf course, and I don't think you see a lot of activity on the baseball diamonds, soccer fields, and other parks in town in the winter. We live in Wisconsin, so of course it isn't used in the winter. Another thing that's used over there that people aren't aware of, a lot of people aren't, is that's one of the only places I know of that you could pull your car up and fish right out of your car in the Fox River. Now, for people that can't afford a boat, that might be not able to walk and carry their stuff to go fish off a pier somewhere, this is an exceptional opportunity. There was also talk of building the path that comes over the Buttermore Bridge and connecting it up through the golf course to the rest of the Riverwalk. So there's a lot going on there, and I think it's crazy to think that we would give up one of our park spaces to try to get them to stay here. If they're going to stay here, let's use something that is sitting vacant, like the Kmart site, right on the expressway there, and get rid of an eyesore and make good use of it, and they could build as beautiful a new headquarters as they want. At the beginning of the meeting, it was stated that the purpose of this council is to guarantee the quality of life in Oshkosh. And I don't see how taking away a park helps with the quality of life in Oshkosh, even though it might cost losing the headquarters. So please, don't be the council that paves paradise. Thank you.
Pam?
Jonathan Damel, 1402 Liberty Street.
I'm going to take this. John Damel. It's been a lot of passion tonight, and I understand it. I do. We're not asking, you know, I'm not asking you to support selling Lake Shore for Sam's Club. I'm asking you to support it for a Fortune 500 company that has the name listed simply Oshkosh. I mean, this is more than trucks and steel. We're not talking about Oshkosh Truck. We're talking about Oshkosh Corporation. We're talking about not just employers versus golfers here, we're talking about community, citywide. We're talking about donations to the food pantry and the Boys and Girls Club, and in-kind donations there that go well beyond anybody that's here, people that may have not have eaten tonight or taken a shower. See, I think we take Oshkosh Corporation for granted because we're so used to having candy in the candy jar here. I'm not going to sit here and talk about hypotheticals, will they leave, what jobs will come here, because nobody knows that. But I can talk about what is. I can talk about the $90,000 that the Boys and Girls Club got this year. I can talk about celebrating 100 years for a corporation. I can talk about donations skyrocketing from this corporation because of Wilson Jones, because he gets it. A lot of people don't understand, Wilson Jones grew up below the poverty line. Wilson Jones is the American dream. Wilson Jones was hungry, sometimes went without food, and got to the point where he's the CEO of this corporation called the Oshkosh Corp that saves lives overseas. Now, I understand that we are asking a sacrifice for you guys. I get that. I too learned how to golf at Lake Shore, not very good because I'm a terrible golfer, but I did have an eagle once in my life, you know, it was on Lake Shore. And I get it, and I do, and it's tough, and we can't celebrate the fact that we're looking to develop that. But if that's the site, then that's the site, because America is about sacrifice. And we have to remember that that's what we're asking these guys to do, is a sacrifice, and it's sacred ground for them. But let's just remember that this goes beyond golfers and employees. I mean, this is widespread. Now, we talk about history. I don't want to look back at this and think that we didn't do everything we could to keep this here. And Mark, I understand that throwing it out there to make sure that we have their ear, I don't blame you for that. Being a leader sometimes is tough, making tough decisions, you know, but that's why we elected you guys, to make tough decisions, and I don't envy you for that. But just keep in mind that this affects way more than Oshkosh Corp employees and golfers. Thank you.
Pam?
We have no further individuals registered to speak.
Thank you. Counsel, what do you think?
If anybody wants to speak, that hasn't registered, do we need them to register, Pam, or can we just have them come up and give their name?
Sheet to the officer.
Sheet is by the officer.
My name is Bill Wyman. I live at 1373 Wagu Avenue. I'm the president and CEO of the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. I'm getting pretty comfortable sitting at this, or standing at this booth. I come up here a lot. This is a very, very important decision for this community. It doesn't, I, we have to put our best foot forward. We have to make Oshkosh look great. Oshkosh Corp can go anywhere they want. We need to have the right place for the right company. I'm not here to tell where to go. I'm here because what Oshkosh Corp does in this community is so important, and we can't lose them. Last year, Oshkosh Corp gave $1 million in giving, in corporate gifts. Out of that, 80% of it stayed here in this region. Oshkosh Corp is going to give, they gave over $175,000 last year in scholarships, and they'll do that again and again and again. That, if they don't do that, if we lose that, who's going to pay for that? Who's going to keep Day by Day Warming Center alive? Who's going to keep the food pantry alive? Who's going to keep the Boys and Girls Club and the Y? Go back, go back to the YMCA and look at the plaque. Look at years ago when they first built the YMCA. Who was on that plaque? It's the Hays, it's the Moslings, it's the people that were at Oshkosh Corp 20, 30, 50 years ago that made Oshkosh happen. That's going to continue to go forward. We can't lose major corporations in this community. I know of a corporation that left this community. I know it really well. It was really, really difficult, and it's not fun. And then they say, oh, well, if Oshkosh Corp goes somewhere else, then we'll still have the factory here. Okay, that sounds good. They'll continue to give back to the factory, but if it's cheaper to make something else, like baby bib overalls and Honduras, all of a sudden, Salina, Tennessee doesn't get any money. So my point is, you've got to have the corporate office here, because this is where the decisions are made. Philanthropic gifts are so important for this community, it's what makes this community work. All those positive things that you've heard that are going so well in Oshkosh, a lot of that is because of philanthropic people. The other thing they do, Oshkosh Corp does so well recently, is they give back their time. They pack food for United Way, they pack food for Feeding America, they sit on almost every board in the community. Those are the people that really care and are giving back. So I don't, I'm not here to say the golf course is better than this place or that place, but I am saying we should roll out the red carpet and give them the best spot we can give them. Thank you.
Pam? Is that it?
I don't have anybody else registered.
I think we have some more.
Anyone wishes to speak after these two ladies, you know, please do the courtesy and watch people's time, and you can go in the hall and register. There's someone there, correct Pam?
No.
Oh. You get the paper from the officer.
Hi, my name is Cindy Dobish, 1185 Christian Drive. I've heard a lot of people talking tonight, and... I've heard a lot of people talking tonight, and one thing that really resonates with me, and I have heard a little bit, but not enough, about the balance that we need to strike in the city between business and our green space and parks. And I see the city growing, I see things, a lot of things happening here, but I never see the parks increasing. I don't see new areas for people to play, bring their children, different experiences. The parks in the city all create, have their own flavor, they all bring something different to the table. And I see the property at Lake Shore Golf Course, it's some of the most beautiful property in the city. And I notice the place that the Oshkosh Truck wants to build is on the most beautiful 30 acres of, of the city probably. And once that property is gone, it's gone forever, and future generations will never get the opportunity to stand on that hill and hit a, hit a golf ball down that fairway on that beautiful view. My husband grew up in the city, his family brought their sons to that golf course to learn how to play golf. Because of that golf course, my husband was able to go to college, 'cause he put himself through school, working at that golf course. He managed that golf course and was a superintendent there for quite a number of years. That golf course means a lot to our family. If it wasn't for that golf course, he wouldn't have gone into that industry. We are both, uh, products of the city. I didn't grow up here in Oshkosh, but I grew up in a city with lots and lots of parks and county parks and city parks, much more than Oshkosh has, 'cause I grew up on a Lake, Lake Shore, Lake Michigan, and they have tremendous parks. And when I came here, I saw some very lovely parks, but I always wished there was more. I wished there was more experiences. I grew up using the pools, my father took us, my brother and me, to the golf, the municipal golf course in Kenosha where I grew up. We golfed there. We played tennis at the public courts, uh, at the public courts. We experienced picnics and family gatherings and all sorts of things at the, the parks, the cookouts, and swimming in the lake. I have so many fond memories, and I'm thinking, the city keeps on growing, but there's, that recreation doesn't continue to expand with the city. And I look at that property, and it's such a beautiful piece of property, I cannot believe that that can be offered up and given away, and we will never get that property back again. It breaks my heart. It breaks my heart, because my grandchildren and their grandchildren will never experience that, what my husband experienced or what I've experienced. And I cannot tell you how much it makes me feel so sad, that we are willing to sacrifice, just give it away, and, and not create that balance, 'cause to me, if the city grows, there needs to be the green space that grows with it. And what I heard tonight, as far as what the city manager said, that there's possibility for other kinds of development there, and it sounded like there's a possibility for other development besides Oshkosh Truck and besides the green space, that there might be some other kind of things going on there that are completely unrelated to the park. It's very disturbing to see decisions possibly being made and people really not aware of what's going on. I'd like everyone who sits up here in the council to really question and wanna know what's going on with this property, because this, talking about this tonight to me has really, it's like letting the genie out of the bottle. If it's not Oshkosh Truck taking this property, who's gonna be going after it next? Who will we be offering it up to next? What will our children be missing next? Thank you.
Ann Dickey, 1813 North Point Street. Um, I grew up on a farm in Virginia, um, where my father, my parents lived and my uncles lived and my grandparents lived. And for the last 25 years of my grandmother's life, she fought the seizure of the farm and farms around it to form a, um, a municipal sewer, you know, tri-county sewer facility that she eventually lost, they eventually built it at the very last minute, and, um, it's underused and it was poorly planned, and it was just a waste of the best farmland in the county. So, I don't have passion about the golf course here, but I have, I feel deeply this, uh, the issue of, um, land going to a purpose that may not be the best, um, use of it. I'm not a golfer. I drove over there the other day, it's gorgeous. I, I feel, I can see how people feel very passionately about it. But what I do hear my friends talking about, as a newcomer here, and, um, is that the way this is happening feels horrible to people. People who don't know about this issue still feel that it's not happening in a transparent way, it's not happening in a way that makes sense. People, um, who might be inclined to support the kind of sacrifice that it would take to sell the golf course, don't feel that the sacrifice is being asked of them directly. And I found myself asking, you know, what, how would it be different if Oshkosh Corp. came and asked the citizens of the city and said, "We really want to stay here, we want to invest in this community, we want this land, we know it's a big sacrifice, but we really need it and want it." And then people could consider that. But instead, we're having all of these discussions, we're, we're dancing around this, we're all, um, in arms about it, we're all feeling deeply about it, we're having all these public meetings, and we're not hearing from them in a way that I feel like if, it's a huge loss to the city to lose pub, public park space when there's so little of it in the city, it might be worth it. I'm not saying it's not worth it. It might well be worth it, but I think it would feel different to people if the, the sacrifice was asked of the people who want to actually receive the good of that sacrifice. And it just, um, it feels like there's an elephant in the room regarding the lack of communication from them, so, thank you.
Pam, is there anyone else would like to speak?
Um, several years ago, we kinda-
Sorry, what's your name?
My name is Bob Weber.
Thank you.
I live at 1100 Farmington Avenue in Oshkosh. Several years ago, we kinda went down this same street regarding Lake Shore Golf Course. The city wanted to get rid of it at that time, and there were several petitions and people saying, "We don't want it to close." And it didn't, and that was a good thing at the time. But now we've got Oshkosh Truck involved, and as much as I hate to see Oshkosh Truck leave this place, I'm wondering why our, uh, city manager waived the, the golf course in front of Oshkosh Truck as a first choice, when we don't even know if that would suffice them, or if there are plenty of other pieces of property around that would, you know, meet their demands and their needs. So, it didn't take much to put two and two together and say, "Yeah, they're just trying to unload the golf course again, and only this time, Oshkosh Truck is involved." So, I think we could pretty much see why they offered the golf course as a first piece of property here. We don't know if this is what they want, we don't know if a lot of other pieces of property would suffice their needs, and we don't know if they're even gonna stay here. But we keep assuming that if we offer them the golf course, they're gonna stay, and I don't think that's necessarily true. Thank you.
I'll just pick this up, as you can see, I'm probably the tallest guy in the room here. Ryan Burchbach, 1055 West 19th, Oshkosh. Um, I think everyone has, has made a lot of good points tonight. I think it's a very serious thing to consider, so thank, thank you for everyone for showing up and, uh, coming up here and talking. Lots of good points. I guess my main point, kinda back to what the mayor said, is that we gotta remember that we're in competition. It's not the question of, "We're in Oshkosh." It's, "We're in the United States, we're in, we're in Wisconsin." We gotta remember that there's other communities that are putting up some pretty good offers. We don't know exactly what kind of offers they're making. Alls we got, alls we know is that we have to put our best foot, foot forward. Uh, just like one of the other gentlemen said, wouldn't it be a shame if we lost the corporate headquarters to, to Nida, to Appleton? What a shame that would be. We can't let that happen. I think we should put our best foot forward. Um, and I tell you what, as a citizen, I've worked at Oshkosh Corporation for a few years, but I also played at Lake Shore Golf Course many, many times, so I can see where both sides are coming from. Um, but yes, you guys have a very important decision to make. Maybe my one suggestion would be, we presented Lake Shore as an option, how about we look at maybe number two option? Maybe let's see if we can offer an alternate number two, to see what Oshkosh Corporate Corporation would say. At least to give the citizens another, um, option, give the company another option. Maybe just, how about that number two spot in town, like the Morgan property or whatnot. But, uh, thanks again for everyone for your time, and, um, appreciate, uh, you guys listening to me.
Thank you. Pam, is there anyone else would like to speak?
Nobody else is registered.
I would like every, to thank everyone for coming and speaking and respecting each other's time and keeping it very close to five minutes. There's a great deal of civility and a very, very contentious topic, so again, thank you. Um, at this point, we will move to our second citizen statement to counsel and ask the city clerk, is there anyone that wishes to speak?
Excuse me, Mr.?
Before we move on, um, the public input, um, sections that we're looking for, uh, these will be, Mr. Beck, you will pick this up and publish that, correct? You'll, you'll, you've been doing a pretty good job of getting information out, uh, so I would probably think that you'll do that, and then we will also be putting this on the city website, correct? Mr. Roloff?
That's what we're discussing. Yeah, that's gonna be posted tomorrow morning.
All right. Just a couple of things. One word that was mentioned several times this evening is "give." Nothing is being given. There's nothing in consideration. I don't think any of us on this council would give public land to someone. There is nothing that is going to be given, so, you know, I urge everybody to consider that, and also to make sure that, that if you have questions, reach out to the council members. I know all of us have gotten quite a few emails, we've responded to most of them, we've gotten phone calls, so we are listening. And the thing is, is that needs to be understood is, if you're on the side of A and council decides B, that doesn't mean you are not listened to. If you are on B and the council decides A, you were, you were heard and you were listened to. This is a tough decision if it comes before us, but I do wanna make the point that nothing is being given.
Councilmember Pal Mary?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And, and I'd just like to add a thank you to those people who came from a distance to weigh in on this issue, that were so passionate about our city. Um, and I guess I would just ask you to share with us why you chose to live elsewhere, if it is an important issue for you, if you are, um, so inclined, so, uh, not at the moment, uh, via email or phone call. Our information is listed on the website, so. So, so thank you again for coming, everyone. I appreciate it.
All right. Uh, my magic machine is malfunctioning, so if you wanna talk, you have to wave again. We're back to old technology. Uh, city clerk, was there anyone that wanted to speak during the second citizen statement, citizen statements portion?
No one is registered.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, councilmember announcements and statements. I see no lights going on, so we'll move to city manager announcements and statements, Mr. Roloff.
The first one I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Davis, the TIF workshop update, just a follow-up from, uh, our recent work session and the work staff's been doing since that time.
Yes, and the staff has been working on updating the typical timeline or the process we go through, uh, TIF, uh, planning. Uh, we certainly heard from councils, they wanted to be included or involved earlier and more often, so we're working that into the process, trying to keep it down to the same length of time wherever possible, uh, so that we can continue to process, uh, applications as, as, as timely as possible. Uh, we're also working on that scoring sheet that we were, when, we've created for both the redevelopment, the industrial, and a mixed use. And last but not least, we're also updating the, uh, application form and some of the parameters for development agreements. I expect you'll have most, if not all of that, available for draft for your review and discussion at the October 10th council meeting.
Thank you. And then it's Deputy Mayor Herman.
Is that gonna incorporate the third, kinda third level of the TIFs we've been talking about, more of that multi, you know, right now we kinda have a job creation TIF, we have more of the historical TIF, and you had talked about a third level scoring?
Yes, uh, mixed use is the technical one, and yes, we have, we have drafted that, and we'll be able to share that with the council on October 10th, at least the latest version we've, we've come up with.
So, that'll be in our packet ahead of time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Roloff, there be an update?
Uh, just an update, uh, I guess if Mr. Pierce was here earlier this evening and he had any update, he probably would've given it to us, but, uh, I got the notice about when the season starts, so I assume things are going well. Um, if you took a look, 11th Avenue is, uh, it's pretty much done. Things were a little better after we did a little more digging, so that was, that was a positive thing. Uh, not as much removal as maybe we originally thought, so that's good. The rest of the, uh, report is in your packet. Um, it's making progress, and we're, we're pleased with that progress. And meanwhile, the city attorney's working on any type of proposal to, uh, to amend the agreement, which will be, uh, coming to you at an upcoming meeting.
Mr. Pierce, Pierce is here, if he wanted to say anything?
No, I'm sure he's, um, things are going. No, I just said, if he had something to say, he would've said it, I figured, so.
Okay, Councilman Beck?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Pierce, you may wanna comment on this, but I've heard through the grapevine that ticket sales as related to the D, to the, the G League, excuse me, for Oshkosh, we're the number one or number two franchise as far as season ticket sales or something? Is that correct?
I checked in before with my name and address, so, um, yeah, the answer would be yes. Within overall revenue right now, within the league, 'cause everyone reports up, um, I've been told we're the number five team in the league out of 26 in terms of revenue, and in terms of new season ticket sales by percentage, in, in terms of capacity, I believe was the number, we are number one. Um, we are over 900 season tickets, and that does not include anything that would be partial season, many plans, or anything else that is full season ticket. So, yeah, this community has stepped up, and I think maybe kinda likes basketball.
Good, thank you.
It's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
I'll propose to council first. Do you wanna go in closed session or after tonight? You don't want to? We can, we can move it to the next council meeting, if there's a consensus.
I would, I think, I would say let's move it if everyone else is open to it.
So, I, um, I guess I would make a recommendation that we delay motion to go into closed session until the October 10th. until the October 10th city council meeting, which at that time will go into closed session to discuss performance evaluation and compensation to the city manager.
We don't need a motion to-
You just overall-
Are we all in agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
That, I think that would be the term unanimous consent.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Our next big task is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.